Good evening. Before we get started tonight, I've got a couple of proclamations we're going to do. The first one is to a special group of people that I've had the opportunity to work with for a lot of years. If I'd ask you guys to come up here. These are really the unsung heroes of our police department. These are, represent our dispatchers. They're really our first, first responders out there. They, they keep people comfortable and safe when they're on the phone. They keep our officers safe, and I really appreciate the job that you guys do. So, I'd like to do a proclamation. Whereas, communication operators are not as visible as the men and women who arrive at the scene of emergencies, but they provide a vital link to public safety services as part of the first responders team. And whereas, often called the unsung heroes of public safety, or the first, first, first responders, since they're usually the first to receive requests for emergency services from the public and play an important role in the successful delivery of public safety services to those in need and are the single vital link for our police department and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio and providing them with information and ensuring their safety. And whereas, the communication operators of the Beaver Creek Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas, each communication operator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job. Now therefore, I, Don Adams, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, along with the entire city council, do hereby proclaim April 13th through April 19th, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the City of Beaver Creek, and thank them for their outstanding service provided to Beaver Creek Township and the City of Beaver Creek. Congratulations.
All right, so yeah, let me introduce, this is Tracy Kaufman and Yolanda Weber, two of our dispatchers. We have 12 total. And I think we'll have a Facebook post tomorrow introducing all of our dispatchers and recognizing them for this week especially. And a week is not enough for what they do. And I want to thank the mayor and city council for presenting this proclamation to recognize them and to highlight the, some of the aspects of their job and what they go through as part of their duties. And I want to thank, on behalf of the police department, I want to thank you guys also for your dedication, for your hard work, and the support that you provide, not just behind the scenes, but also as a first point of contact. For most of the citizens that call in and need some type of assistance, you guys are the first ones there to help them out. So, we appreciate the work that you do. And as the mayor mentioned, a lot of times their work is, is behind the scenes and it often goes unnoticed, and they rarely get the recognition that, that they deserve. But, I could say 100%, there's no way that we would be able to function as a police department without them, without the work that they do. So, I appreciate your professionalism. I appreciate the commitment, the dedication that you guys have and all of our dispatchers. And, like I said, it's an honor to be able to serve with you. And thank you for choosing to be a part of our team and choosing to work for Beaver Creek. So, we appreciate it.
Because you're welcome. Now, some of you know I worked as COPP, and they checked on us all the time out there to make sure we were safe. And they do that with the officers. It's an amazing job that they do. I'm gonna ask Sarah, and I think... We have something else coming up this next month. And it's our Arbor Day. So, we have two people from the Tree Advisory Board here. We have a proclamation for them as well. It says, "Whereas, the Arbor Day Foundation was founded in 1972 and has grown to become the largest nonprofit membership organization dedicated to the planting of trees with more than 1 million members, and is now celebrating 50 years. And whereas, in April 2025, Beaver Creek was awarded for the seventh time, a Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation to honor its commitment to the effective urban forest management by the Arbor Day Foundation. And whereas, this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products while beautifying and enhancing wherever they are planted. And now therefore, I, Don Adams, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, along with the entire city council, do hereby proclaim April 24th, 2025, as Arbor Day in the City of Beaver Creek, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect trees, parks, and encourage all citizens to plant trees native to Ohio, to gladden the heart and to promote the well-being of this and future generations."
Well, thank you so much. We appreciate that. We're looking forward to celebrating Arbor Day with you for the first time ever in the city of Beaver Creek. We're going to do Arbor Day at Southern Ohio Brewery on, what is that? On the 24th, from 6 to 9, on Factory Road there. So, come out, get free saplings that are native plants, or native trees to Ohio. You can plant them in your yard. You can get one or two, I think. And we have a variety of choices that'll suit all kinds of different habitats. And then, we also have a hike coming up, a Tree ID hike, that's gonna happen at Fox Run Park down on Southfield, over in like the old Terra Platte. And we'd love to see you there as well.
Thank you very much. Now, are they gonna have a beer made out of trees?
They are.
That should be interesting. Now I'd like to call this meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Littrell.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here. Do I have a...
Move to excuse Councilwoman Garcia?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilwoman Garcia. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I'll turn it over to Councilman Doer.
Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where its standing, one nation under God, individual and liberty and justice for all.
If you could all remain standing for just a moment. As the calendar falls, we've had three weeks since our last meeting. There were five Mondays in the month of March. And it just feels heavy in terms of local and international news, in terms of what's happened. From a brutal earthquake in Myanmar, and into Thailand, the devastation caused there, the collapse of a hall in the Dominican Republic. I was in New York City with my other job at Cedarville University. And on Thursday night, a helicopter went down in the Hudson River, killing the family as well as the pilot. We flew out later that, that evening. And at Cedarville University, we also lost a dear colleague of mine, Dr. Mark Clausen, who was a long-term friend. Mark resided in Xenia for almost 25 years, but it's a reminder to me of just how many times friends in other communities have a big impact here in Beaver Creek. Mark was a, an elder at Grace Covenant Church on North Fairfield for 18 years. He was a founder of Reformation Classical School that meets at Redeemer Orthodox Presbyterian Church on South Fairfield at Shakertown, and did a lot of media interviews in the Miami Valley. A sermon on the mount says, "Blessed are those who mourn, for they will be comforted." Please join me in a moment of silent prayer for those that mourn. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a set of minutes from March 24th, regular meeting. Any additions, corrections?
Mayor, I think we need to approve the agenda here.
You're right.
So I would move to approve the agenda.
All right, there we go. Moved right by it, didn't I? I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Anyone, any...
Move to approve the agenda.
No, she's already...
She approved it.
And a second. It's already been approved and accepted, so... All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Starting out really great tonight, isn't it? Now, we have a set of minutes from the March 24th, 2025 meeting.
Move to approve the minutes of the 24th of March, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from March 24th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Ordinance 25-02.
Ordinance 25-02. An ordinance rezoning 25.195 acres from A1 Agriculture, further described as Book 1, Page 6, Parcel 9, on the property tax maps of Green County, Ohio, to RPUD 25-1, Residential Planned Unit Development, PUD 25-1.
This is a second reading, so anything else from staff? Council?
I had a question. Randy, the question is for you. And it's, it's just a repeater, a clarification from last meeting. Could you please re-explain to me Condition Number 5, which is about the proposed lot size changes and proximity from other residential lots and then the 50-foot buffer?
Sure.
Can you re-explain?
Yeah, in the zoning code under RPUD, it states that any new PUD where the lots of the new PUD that are immediately adjacent to existing residential need to be the size of those lots in the existing residential. So for, if any lot in this neighborhood were immediately adjacent to R1A, it would need to be 20,000 square feet. On the concept plan provided by the applicant, they showed a 50-foot buffer. So therefore, a residential lot used for a house, there was no residential lots that were immediately adjacent property to the north. And therefore, the provision in the zoning code for that 20,000 square foot minimum doesn't apply.
And the difference between the 20,000 square foot lot and the minimum 16,000 for RPUD lots? Is it just the difference between R1A and then RPUD?
Yeah. If it were next to an RPUD that had 16,000 square foot lots, you know, we're looking at down the road, if surrounding area starts to redevelop. You know, we want to make sure that adjacent lots are similar size. Or, you know, this may not develop over the next 10 years, but the next door neighbor might. So, we're just trying to think of different scenarios where the neighboring properties may develop in the future and try to account for that. That's where the 16,000 square foot come up.
So if a neighboring parcel were to develop at 16,000 square foot lots, then this parcel would be required to do that too along the adjacent line?
If it hadn't developed yet.
Yeah, if it, obviously.
Yep, right.
Unless there's a 50-foot buffer?
Either that, or if that neighborhood has smaller lots as well. If they have the 12,000 square foot lots or 10,000 square foot lots. It would be, it kind of goes back to making sure it's like-for-like when you're immediately adjacent.
Right. Because most of the lots that are adjacent are...
They're 20,000 plus, yeah.
Are they?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. In the proposed site plan, which I understand is not what we're talking about right now.
Right.
Quite a bit smaller.
Correct.
Okay.
I know it can be confusing. We were just trying to anticipate future development adjacent to this and make sure that they're protected if this hadn't developed yet. If it has developed, then they know what they're, they're building next to.
Right. And then, an adjacent development, that's a... If this has already been built, an adjacent development would then be required to build similar lot sizes to this one?
Correct. We would continue the same style of conditions. We'd use those same, similar conditions.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That was just a very confusing... I brought it up last time, and I still needed a refresher.
Sure.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I had right now.
Anyone else?
I'd like to expand on that question, if I can. I tried to get you before you sat down, but I thought he was gonna ask something else.
My step back.
All right. My question is in relation to that 50-foot step back, but I'm talking about Number 6 on the conditions. If you could just help me out in understanding the actual, the actual setbacks. All right. Specifically, I'm talking about 6B.
6B?
B, yeah.
Well, since there's gonna be the 50-foot buffer, then that means with... Assuming that they move forward with the site plan that they showed, which is not a part of this application, but it's still in the packet, then they would just, that 50-foot is not part of the setbacks. It's the 35-foot rear. And if it were adjacent in existing PUD, so again, that's not applicable. So it's basically gonna be 35-foot rear yard setback.
Okay.
If they go with that 50-foot strip.
Okay. So the, these setbacks are actually, start at the 50-foot setback, at the 50-foot...
Right, that's, yeah, yeah. It goes from there, and they have to be at least 35 feet from that property.
From that line?
Right.
So we got, so really, we're talking 50-foot plus the 35 feet?
Right. Those houses wouldn't be, they would be no, could be no closer than the 85.
Okay, because the way, the way I was reading this, it just says that we shall have a minimum of 50-foot rear yard setback.
Yeah, again...
And the setback, I just wanted to specify and make specific that that setback, because we're using 50 feet a couple times here. First, we have the 50 feet of whatever we're calling that, um, common ground or association.
It'll be a buffer area, yeah.
Yeah, buffer. That that 50-foot has to be maintained permanent and can't be anything built on it, correct?
Yeah, assuming that the developer moves forward with the plans that they, if they, it should just, I mean, I'm not...
I understand.
But if they move, if they've moved on and another developer came in, they may show the 20,000 square foot lots with no 50-foot buffer. Some, we were trying to write the legislation to account for both in case, you know, that happens. We didn't want to be pigeonholing to one or the other.
The 50-foot setback though, is, is the condition, it's obviously a hang-up because we are not, we're deviating from the minimum of the 20,000 square foot lot condition because of this 50-foot. So, I feel like there needs to be a condition somewhere that this 50-foot buffer zone has, must be permanent or maintained in some way.
Yeah. Moving forward, this, it'll be owned by the HOA, so, I mean, they would... And when we get, if we got to the subdivision stage, it would show as a lot dedicated to the HOA. And a, you know, a non-buildable lot designation could be put on it in perpetuity. Again, the 50-foot is if there are no, if there weren't a 50-foot buffer, then the houses could be 50 feet from the property line instead of 85, which is what you get with the 35 and a 50-foot buffer. So, really, you get a bigger buffer, a bigger setback of the property with the 50-foot buffer and a 35-foot setback, and you would just a 20,000 square foot lot.
Okay. All right.
I'll stay.
Thank you.
Yep.
I guess two questions for legal and one for the applicant, so I think I can get more steps. Part of where I've struggled is just accessing the site to be able to look at it, to make an assessment. Do you... What kind of legal opinions out there in terms of access to the site? Because on Graham, you know, there's no trespassing, Bayview, there's the lift station. Everywhere else, it's, it's hard just to see into the site. In terms of making a decision, are there legal decisions that have been made about the ability to simply access a site in order to come to a conclusion?
So the specific site plan stage, you would need to make sure that there was sufficient access to and from. But at the zoning stage, you don't regulate traffic with zoning?
So there's nothing I can do, look at?
I mean, to look at for case law?
I'm sorry, to look at for case law on, on not using traffic?
No, no, for personal access.
For you to personally go to the, to the site?
Nothing, sign up. It's prohibited.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I would have to do some research on that. I don't, I don't know.
No.
I apologize. I misinterpreted your question.
That's quite right. It's, it's not an easy one. There's, there are a lot of moving pieces to it. For this case and for numerous others, we get a lot of emails specifically related to how to interpret the general welfare when it comes to the zoning code. Sometimes, people interpret it through their own lens. You know, if it's something that's happening to me, it's against the general welfare. So we have to be cautious of that. But a last council meeting, I raised four issues that are specific to the site. Water runoff, the existence of a lift station, the cell tower, and the wetlands in an adjacent lot. Do any of those fit under a general welfare consideration? Are you aware of other cases, decisions that courts have made pertaining to those types of issues?
So, do you want me to go through each one of those in particular?
It's up to you. I know that's a lot in one question.
Yeah, could you go through them one by one and I'll respond?
Water runoff. I mean, this is a... I know in, in general, any retention, detention pond tends to make a site and a situation better. But over and over again, in this neighborhood, there are just issues of flooded basements, runoff, they're just considerable.
So when there is a new development, it is supposed to leave the runoff better than the way, when it started? So it, it should be better with the development, not worse? And they're required to make sure it's, it's at least as good as it was?
Thank you. The second is the lift station. Discussed with some changes potentially. I know it's under this jurisdiction of the county. Thank you to the city manager for the clarification there. Much appreciated.
Yes, that's right.
Yes, that's right. The lift station would be under the jurisdiction of the county. And once again, this is a zoning issue.
Yep.
And not, would not be addressed at this point.
Okay. Third is the cell tower on the site.
I'm sorry. I made notes from the last one, so I'm pulling them up. So once again, that would be part of the specific site plan stage of the, once again, this is for the pure zoning issue that we're talking about today. Whether to change this into an RPUD, you wouldn't address the cell phone, a tower where it's located.
And the wetlands. I mean, I, I study a fair bit of international law, so I don't know that it's applicable here. But it just, it gets very messy when it comes to protected waterways, environmental areas, et cetera.
So if an area is determined to be a wetland, there are specific requirements that they would have to meet under the OEP. Potentially even involve the Ohio, I'm sorry, the Army Corps of Engineers if that were to be determined. And there are ways of mitigating issues if a wetland is, is determined to be there.
But for a simple rezoning?
You, once again, you wouldn't look at those issues during the rezoning process.
Or is it chicken and egg where, that's, that's I think where the struggle comes in here.
I mean, this, this would happen at, the OEP, that when they start developing the area, they would have to come across those things, not during the zoning process. Because any, anything we would do now would just be conjecture as to what those issues would be. And we have to make a decision based upon the evidence presented.
Appreciate your expertise. Thank you. To the applicant. Can you give us a sense of other sites that you have around Ohio or other states where you've dealt with similar issues? Just to give us a sense of what your company has done?
Sure.
How you've dealt with these types of issues?
Similar issues, meaning stormwater, wetlands, et cetera, or just general?
Yeah, the four that I've listed. I know a lift station is very rare, so it's unlikely to... Please.
That's a site-specific one. Everything else we deal with on every single site. So, stormwater. To the wetland, I can have our engineer speak to the stormwater, because she is an engineer, I'm not.
Excellent.
On the wetland situation, we wouldn't be able to develop the site if the Army Corps of Engineers, the EPA, determined that it was a wetland. So, once we have zoning, part of our due diligence process is to do what's called a wetland delineation study, where we actually have a consultant go out there and determine which streams can be touched, which ones can't. And it can potentially kill a project if it, if that stream goes right through where we want to put lots or if there's a wetland where we want to put lots. We just don't do that until we have zoning in place, yeah. But that's, that's part of the due diligence, along with doing a geotechnical study where we take soil borings and find out where the water table is. All that happens during the engineering process.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And if you want more details about what we do for stormwater and how that's calculated, Christie can speak to that.
Sure. Please. I think, I think for the neighbors here, there are plenty.
Yeah.
And they've just seen this day-to-day for years.
I'm Christie Moore with Choice One Engineering. So as for the stormwater design, once we get into the engineering process of the design, we will set, there's a set of rules and regulations from the City of Beaver Creek and the EPA that have, there's a certain percentage of water that you can release based on the pre-developed flow and the post-developed flow. So we have to meet that pre-developed flow and make it better, as Mr. Lonsberry was speaking to, whenever we design it. And it won't, the plans will not be approved until it meets those rules and regulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else?
I have several questions. Most of them are gonna be directed at legal, I think, and then I do have one for Randy, but I'll let you see it for a little bit. When we're talking about traffic, which we don't like to talk about, it's my understanding that you can take into consideration the needs of the community. Is that correct?
In a zoning application?
Yes.
So, once again, for traffic, you cannot regulate traffic with zoning? I'm not sure if that gets to your, to your question.
No, it doesn't. So, I guess the theory is, we want to give the landowner the greatest enjoyment of their property, but we can take into account the needs of the community?
You can in a zoning application, taking into the needs of the community, yes. But once again, regulation of traffic overall cannot be done through zoning.
Okay, let's not talk about traffic. Let's talk about, let's talk about the needs of the community first. What does that entail? If it doesn't entail traffic, what falls under the needs of the community? What are some of the things that we can examine when we're looking at whether this is meeting the needs of the community or not, or it's impacting the needs of the community?
The, the rights of the landowner are protected under the Constitution, so they're paramount. And if you want to take into the needs of the community, lots of things can be taken into consideration. Like at the specific site plan, we talked about access for, you know, getting vehicles in and out. The general welfare generally talks about a community's ability to carefully grow versus, you know, there are unplanned cities in America where you end up with a gas station next to, a childcare place next to, an adult film rental place next to another house. I mean, Houston is the largest unplanned city in the United States, maybe in the world. So that type of thing can be taken into consideration when you're trying to develop a community. Aesthetics can be used. So we oftentimes have requirements of what the outside of a building looks like so that the community doesn't fall into shambles and that sort of way. So there's a long list of things you can consider.
And when you're considering... And when you're considering, now we're going to come back to traffic, traffic in a zoning case, essentially, you have to have evidence that there's going to be an adverse impact, is that correct?
So you'd have to have specific evidence that there would be an adverse impact on that because of the zoning, and in this particular case, we're in an impact fee area, so traffic is the responsibility of the city and it's already going to be covered under that impact fee, so traffic really can't be a consideration at all in the zoning process for this application.
Okay. The next question I have is related to the VPA. According to the VPA, we have to, we talk about this primary access and where it should be. And that it should be off of Kemp, under the VPA, I guess it's confusing to me, I'll be honest with you, the VPA is incredibly confusing to me, but as I understand it, we're supposed to be assessing whether or not there's going to be, or there needs to be some type of an assessment on access to Kemp Road. But, for whatever reason, I guess, can you explain the process of how a VPA was developed? Would be step one.
Is that one for me or Randy? Randy probably has.
Whoever is better suited to answer.
Well, when the, back in 1994, when they approved the first city land use plan, they had ninety or a hundred vacant planned areas where they wanted to call out in the text, because at the time, there were less categories on the map, and so they wanted, it was basically just a bunch of planned areas. So they called it out textually. Now slowly, we've been getting rid of those VPAs over the last thirty years. This VPA remains, but it's basically just an area that is vacant, that specific language wanted to be attached to that area, and so there's a language in the land use plan that specifically calls out VPA eight, VPA ten, it's on, it's on slide number eight, that's where I was looking at.
So how many of these are there left in the city?
Ballpark, thirty, thirty-fourty.
And how do we normally handle them? I mean, are VPAs normally consist of interlocked properties where, for example, if you're buying that northeastern corner, your access to Kemp is going to be near impossible unless you're purchasing all the land around it?
Yeah, I mean, it's not necessarily dependent on parcel lines or property owners, it's just a general area. Such as VPA sixty-four encompasses where the, it's at Shakertown and Grange Hall where the church owns vacant land, it used to encompass where Traditions, the assisted living is in, and then there's some vacant land behind that, that was all part of VPA sixty-four. So it was independent on owner or property line. We have many VPAs, you can see VPA ten up there, there's several different property lines, the Black Mine, and those is the property lines. That might be under one ownership right now. But I know that it, those VPAs don't depend on property lines.
Do you want to say something?
Well, it's, in this case, it's really unfortunate because there's multiple owners.
Yeah.
And I spoke to a gentleman on the phone today that encouraged the city to, you know, use eminent domain to acquire property to get out to Kemp Road, right? So that, because he was concerned with Graham Drive and the other subdivisions getting impacted with traffic from here. If we talked it through a little bit more, I mean, it's unfortunately a little impractical, but I mean, had this been one particular property owner that had the entire site, then it'd be a lot easier to do something like that.
Yeah, it just, to me, it just confuses the issue. I understood that, you know, in the event that we did want to get that access, it would be on the city's dime, and we would have to pay for it, and we would have to develop the land, especially because it's a bad impact fee, but it's unfortunate that that language is there, and we really can't do a whole lot with it.
Although, last meeting, we did talk about future planning and understanding, you know, that, yes, we eventually want that connection to occur.
Correct.
Yeah, if the landowners want to sell.
Oh yeah, I mean, we may be talking fifty years from now, but...
Yeah, okay. And then the last issue that I really wanted to touch on, and it's kind of to circle back to a lot of the conversations that we had earlier regarding this fifty-foot buffer. I'm also a little confused by the language, and I'm still confused, so maybe, I seem to be the only one confused about anything, so maybe it's just me. On six B, it says there's this thirty-five minimum rear yard buffer except lots that abut, no. Oh, so, okay, never mind, now that I'm reading it out loud, it's making sense what you were saying. I guess, can we go back to, and we discussed this last meeting, but I'd like to talk about it again, can we go back to the decision-making process and why we decided to allow the fifty-foot buffer and not follow what we normally do when we are abutting twenty thousand foot lots? How that decision was arrived to, who proposed that decision, and why we accepted that decision?
Really, really, we, I hate to sound like a parakeet here, but really, that's more of an issue for the site plan stage, but we're here now, we've got the...
Well, it is, but we're deciding the buffers now, so it's really a zoning base, too. I mean, we can't change the buffers once we get to the specific site plan.
Right, well, what I mean is, they showed lots that weren't immediately adjacent. And what they originally proposed, and they came to us first with the, well, they showed it first, is plans that showed a thirty-foot buffer. And we came back to them and said, listen, if you're going to do the non-adjacent lots, we require a fifty-foot buffer between multifamily, we require, and single-family residential, and we require between commercial and single-family residential, so we want to keep that standard fifty-foot buffer, so we need to increase that from thirty to fifty. Had they shown lots that are immediately adjacent, we would have said you have to make those twenty thousand square feet. Now, again, that, there's a difference in building setbacks, when you get that fifty-foot buffer, then you also, and a thirty-five-foot building setback, that pushes the houses further away, they are smaller lots, but pushes them further away from the existing property lines to the neighbors, versus the twenty thousand square foot lot with a fifty-foot building setback, they would be thirty-five feet closer, we wouldn't have that fifty-foot additional buffer area.
So are we making an accommodation based upon a specific site plan, in consideration of a specific site plan that we're not supposed to be considering? So for all of us, we're not supposed to think about the specific site plan, but we're now making accommodations based upon a theoretical specific site plan that was presented by the developer, is that correct?
I mean, in reality, we would just say, any, I mean, even if they did, if they showed us that, which is what future concept plans are going to look like, we would say any lot immediately adjacent needs to be twenty thousand square feet, and probably would not bring up the buffer, and if they showed something that wasn't immediately adjacent, then we would react to it when we got it, and say, if you're going to use that, you need to bring it back fifty.
But is that really your, do you have the ability to make that decision? Doesn't city council set that decision?
You can, I mean, you can, you can say, all lots, lots have to be, or no buffer area shall be permitted, and lots adjacent have to be twenty thousand square feet. I was reacting to what they had proposed. I mean, yeah, I mean, if the city council wants to make that determination.
I'm just asking the question, and, you know...
And that's kind of what I was alluding to, is, you know, this is something that we, from my understanding from the last meeting, we have, we are deviating from our standard practice in what we've done in the residential communities, at least in the past fifteen years. We've not done something like this before with any of the new developments that have come in?
We have some lots that, like Sky Crossing kind of curves, so there is like almost a wedge piece that is a buffer, and so those lots that are separated by the wedge piece from existing aren't the twenty thousand square feet. We do not have one that has an entire solid property, no.
I just wanted to comment as well, that allowing the fifty-foot buffer, I think I agree with Randy's interpretation, once you put in that buffer, that immediately adjacent is no longer applicable, so that allows them to get a bypass from having to have those lots, and it's similar to the buffers that are required in other circumstances, where I know, I'd have to look at the zoning code specifically to see, but I know when there's like multifamily units, abutting, single-family units, there has to be a buffer in between those, otherwise you have to do lot size restrictions, so I think Randy's fifty-foot buffer is consistent with what the code calls for in other situations.
Understood, so councilor, what minimum buffer is acceptable?
So the minimum buffer has to be reasonable, and that's in the eyes of the beholder. In our particular zoning code, the buffers that are always talked about between commercial and residential, multifamily and single-family, the ones I looked at were all fifty-foot buffers, so this was, would be, once again, consistent with what Randy has offered. If he gave, for some reason, we were requiring a hundred-foot buffer here, but in a commercial to a residential, we only require fifty, I think, you know, the reasonableness, arbitrary, capricious, those type of, that's the words that the court looks at when they review a zoning decision.
But we don't have to, I mean, we're providing an exception right now, so we don't have to allow for that buffer, is that correct?
I don't believe there's language in the zoning code that says that you have to have the residential lots immediately adjacent to the neighborhood. It just says if there are lots immediately adjacent, they have to be the minimum size of that adjacent neighborhood.
But I guess we could remove that condition from the proposed resolution and there not be any legal concern, is that correct? I'm sorry, that's a loaded question, but, a very loaded question.
A very loaded question.
Sorry.
I'm trying to think of the best way to respond to that, so when you read the zoning code, it just says that those lot requirements are required when the lots are immediately adjacent. If there's going to be a buffer, they're not immediately adjacent. So I don't know how you would require them to meet the immediately adjacent requirement when they're not immediately adjacent, so in other words, if they put that fifty-foot buffer in there and you're saying you still have to do twenty thousand square foot lots, the code would say that's not, I mean, that's not true. Under the code, once they're not immediately adjacent, that requirement is...
So it'd be something that we would, again, just address at the specific site plan phase?
So this is a little bit of putting the cart before the horse, because if they hadn't provided specific site plans, we wouldn't have talked about this at all.
Right.
And I think at the specific site plan phase, the same issue would have arisen, where if they had put up smaller lots immediately adjacent, we would have said that won't be approved, and then if they added the buffer at the specific site plan, you'd say, okay, this does now meet the code requirements, you don't have to have those twenty foot, or the twenty thousand square foot lot sizes because you have that buffer.
We may say that, but that's something that we, I mean, we're kicking the can down the road, essentially.
It's the problem we get into with the last, like, ten rezoning requests, because they provide specifics, which is great on one hand and terrible on the other, because we start arguing over the specifics, which we shouldn't be taking into consideration with zoning.
But we are.
It's Alan. But I, Councilman Schwartz, I'm not sure that I would be in favor of removing the language that's in there, because that provides larger setbacks than would typically be required if there were a buffer, eighty-five foot.
Right, I mean, that would increase the separation.
Is better the way it's written than...
That's, I agree completely, that's what I determined after you explained to me, well, I didn't understand in the reading of that, I thought that the fifty-foot was now the new distance instead of the thirty-five feet, because I was reading it wrong, so I completely agree with what you're saying. It is farther. In essence, you're talking, if the houses that are in the lots behind them have another thirty-five, forty feet, you're talking a hundred, hundred-and-eighty possibly feet away from the houses behind them.
But how is this any different than if we did it as a condition during the specific site plan?
I guess we're just starting from scratch then, though.
I mean, because if we're, if it's reason to believe that fifty-foot is going to be reasonable, then we're still going to have to require the setbacks from that reasonableness line.
No, you're probably right, but we've got a known, we've got a known entity right here.
We do, but I guess to the developer, if you're required to meet that twenty thousand foot match, is that something that you would consider? And I think we asked that question last time, and the answer was no, if the developer thinks otherwise, then please, by all means, but I don't think that it would be a reasonably prudent decision financially, but I don't want to speak for the developer either. I just think that it's something for council to consider. I don't think that it matters whether we do it now or whether we do it at the specific site plan, I think that the requirements are going to remain the same. Would you agree with that, council? Another loaded question.
So, this is like when the problems are created when someone does a specific site, or at least a concept plan where you can see stuff. It'd be like if someone had done a use that you knew you didn't want in the development, and they showed it on the...
Yeah.
And I think most council even would just address it then, in the zoning code, where you know, like, oh, they want to do that, like, cut that, you know, head up, that off at the pass. Once again, we wouldn't have had to deal with this until the site plan stage, had there not been any concept plan provided, but once the issue is brought up, I'm not sure why, what reasoning there would be to kick that can down the road.
Just to give the developer a little more time to think about what they want to do, but...
I mean, the developers still will have time to think about what they do, because they could come back and put less lots and twenty thousand square foot right up next to it at the specific site plan under these conditions, because it says it only requires, that requirement changes depending on whether the buffer is there or not.
Okay. I don't think I have any more questions right now, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Chuck, do you have anything?
Just under point seven, that's, I realize that's site plan type issues, but I am still aggravated and bothered by the transit, the traffic issues, and I realize, I've heard council, talked with the city manager, but I'll tell you, I lose a lot of sleep over how many cars are going to go through that neighborhood, and I think it's going to change a lot. I know there's debate about how many automobiles, but fifty-five lots and two cars, a home, and walking through that area and seeing how passive it is, and then how radically it's going to change, and I know there's debate on that, but I'll reserve my comments, Your Honor, for point seven when site plan comes up. Appreciate your time.
We're good, anyone else?
Yes, I think so. Randy, I'm going to build on that a little bit. Going back to what Councilwoman Schwartz just spoke about, we put something in the ordinance here with regard to specific site plan. Can you talk about the, is it going to be a requirement to have that lift station removed?
I mean, the engineering really has to, they have to do some preliminary engineering to show how that, how they would connect to Valley View, so it's hard to say exactly what does and what does not need to be moved until we see engineering plans.
I guess my point kind of goes back to the, we've headed something off at the pass with the setback, the lot lines, and here we've got with the setback, the lot lines, and here we've got, uh, Valley View dead ends into a lift station, and Graham is right now the only access to the site. And so I think you brought up a really good point, because if, and maybe it's something we just, we need to address at the specific site plan, or we will address the specific site plan, but I almost want to ensure that there are at least two different entrances into this neighborhood. Do you know what I mean? Like, because you can't get there right now from Valley View.
Correct. That's why we have the condition that the, um, the lift station be accounted for, because most likely, I mean, just looking at from the aerials perspective, it looks like it's going to need to be moved or adjusted, or what are the, whatever they need to do to get it out of the way so we can get that road, because we definitely, we definitely want two access points into the neighborhood. We don't, the subdivision regulations limit the number of houses you can have on a singular access point. I believe it's 30. Once you get over 30 homes, there has to be more than one access point, per the fire department regulations and our subdivision regulations. I think it's 100 if you go to multifamily.
So should we consider either, do we need to consider adding that language to at least ensure there are two? Or is what you just referred to...
Like, we wouldn't, staff wouldn't recommend approval of a specific site plan that didn't have secondary access point, or at least two. But if, yeah, and the fire department would also have a problem with it. So if we want to, if you want to add that language, I don't see it hurting anything to add a minimum of two access points to the site.
Yeah, I don't think it would be necessary to do that, but you can if you want to. They're going to have to have, meet that requirement regardless of whether it's in there or not.
As long as that's, as long as that's a fact.
I think the fire department will insist upon that.
Yeah, and us too, but yeah.
I know it's a little bit early, but the lift station, have we talked to Green County much about that? Or is it kind of, they're still waiting to see if we go through the zoning?
I think that we have not, but I think that, I'm not sure if the applicant has, or the engineer has it from their head, it looks like they have.
So there is a plan then for that?
I can let them talk to it more.
If you would.
Yeah, we are in talks with Green County, and they have informed us that we would need to remove that lift station and then connect into the gravity when we connect to Valley View.
Okay, and they're good with that? Or is that, that's their suggestion?
Correct, yeah.
Anyone else? There's your name on it, so I'll let you go. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 25-02. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Let's do a little call just to be on the safe side.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes. All right, I know I will have several questions at the site plan.
Yeah.
For sure. All right, next up, ordinance 25-06.
Ordinance 25-06, an ordinance to vacate a portion of public right-of-way of Eastside Drive upon application of the owners of property abutting the same right-of-way.
Wait a second, I'm sorry, it is a second reading. I apologize, I didn't see, I looked right over that. This is not a good night for me. Is there anything else from staff on this? Counsel? Have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 25-06.
Second?
Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 25-06. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Another second reading, ordinance 25-07, anything from staff? Mr. Burkett? Anything from staff on the rezon?
Ordinance 25-07, an ordinance rezoning .65 acres from B2 Community Business, further described as Book One, Page Nine, Parcel 45 on the Property Tax Maps of Green County, Ohio, to C-PUD 25-2, Commercial Plan Unit Development.
Just wondering if there's been an update by the applicant on some of my suggestions from the first reading. Again, I think it's a great plan, I think it fits very nicely, but just curious in terms of the stacking question in particular. And again, I use Valvoline, like Valvoline, I think that's a great amount there, but I...
He wants a pass.
But any drive-through in Beaver Creek gets busy, and that's a legitimate issue. We tend to be very popular, whether it's a drive-through restaurant, or in this case, oil change, so just curious if you have new input, new ideas?
Thank you. Jonathan Woker with McBroaddale Clary. No new input. We have filed our specific site plan, so we are working with Randy and his staff and expect to have a plan before you hear in a month or two. But I will say, you know, my client, Valvoline, has done a very detailed analysis of that, and I think of the stacking. So we're looking forward to working through that with staff, but no real changes.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd motion to approve ordinance 25-07.
Second?
Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 25-07. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next one, ordinance 25-08.
Ordinance 25-08, an ordinance by the Beaver Creek City Council transferring ownership of approximately 54.5 acres of land situated at Grange Hall Road and Shakertown Road, parcel ID numbers B42-3-13-30 and B42-3-13-29 to the Beaver Creek Development Corporation for the purpose of promoting economic growth and declaring the property surplus.
And this is a second reading as well?
Nothing. Nothing's changed. If you have any questions from myself or legal.
Okay. Anything from council?
Your Honor, I'd move to approve ordinance 25-08.
Second?
Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 25-08. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Now we finally came to a first reading, ordinance 25-09.
Ordinance 25-09, an ordinance by the Beaver Creek City Council authorizing the special assessments to property owners for the 2024 Sidewalk Repair Program pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 729.09.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. If you recall back in February 2024, City Council approved Resolution 24-11, which initiated the first sidewalk repair program in the history of the city of Beaver Creek. Since that time, I was just going to highlight some of the high points since that approval. For this year's program, we concentrated on portions of the Hunter's Ridge neighborhood and Coia Estates. Through the program, we managed to eliminate 26 tripping hazards through the program. We were very lucky as far as cost. Eighteen dollars a square foot is a very, very good price, which resulted in lower bills being sent to the end property owners. We received a lot of positive feedback from the program, and again, we had a total of 25 proprietors in the program. Of those, 17 paid in full when they received their bill, one hired his own private contractor, and we are left with seven property owners where we're looking at assessing those costs to those property owners. Again, I mentioned that very first step back in February 2024. Well, this is the final step in this process. And preparing for this, we advertised a legal ad for three weeks in February. In that legal ad, we told the public that we have the list of estimated assessments ready for public viewing, and we invited the public to come in to review that and to file any objections they may have with that. When the public input period expired, we didn't receive any objections for City Council to consider for the assessments. And again, we're going to be recouping the cost the city paid for the repairs over a five-year period. The assessments vary in value, some, the lowest is 67.60, and the highest assessment is 154. And again, that's every year for a five-year period. And with that, if you have any, answer any questions?
Well, I have seen the success with, you know, compliance.
Absolutely.
Able to achieve what you did.
This is an, excuse me, this is an ordinance, so if there's any public input to this, but any questions that they'd like to, is that the council? Please do so. Please state your name and address.
Bob Trout, 2187 Bassett Court. I just have a question with the notifications. Did they send the individual property owners a letter also, or was it just put in the, in a public publication, which, like I said, I never saw anything. Didn't apply to me, but like I said, I never saw anything. And I'm just curious if the homeowners were sent a letter specifically on those items? So don't need an answer today, but I'd be just curious on that one.
All right, seeing no more, I'll close the public. Do you have a response to that?
Sure. Yeah, per the statute, we're required to serve notice on every property owner after City Council approves the initial resolution. So we not only send the resolution, we also have a flyer that goes along with it, that in plain language kind of explains the options everybody has as far as the program goes. Those are certified mail. There's a couple, a handful, that either refuse it or it doesn't get delivered. What we do in that case, we advertise in the paper, but we also send via regular mail the same package to them, so they get it.
Mayor, just a comment, I voted against Resolution 2411 last year. I'm going to stay consistent with that, but at the same time, I have full respect for City Council for the decision, the program. Mr. Borman, this is excellent information, and certainly a lot for me to reconsider as we see this unfolding. I foresaw additional problems, and it doesn't seem like they're materializing at this moment, so I'll continue to watch. But thank you for your great work and the way that you connect with homeowners and look out for the city, but I'll stay consistent with my original vote, Mayor. Thank you.
I do have a quick question. You said a lot of the homeowners were happy that we did that, or they were pleased with what we did. I'm kind of curious how, and I'm not used to that.
It's a surprise to me.
Yeah, well, honestly, I had one property owner who was not happy at all with the program that we talked through it, we worked out a resolution. There were a couple in the Hunter's Ridge neighborhood, for example, where the lady, every year during Halloween, had to put up cones because she was afraid the children were going to trip over the walk, and examples like that, where they were just glad to see that safety hazard taken care of.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anyone else?
That was my question. Thank you.
I did want to point out, this is my fault, there's a typo in the second whereas, it should be, instead of 797.07, it should be 729.07, so I...
I was going to ask you about that.
Yeah. Yeah. I read it a million times and never caught that until right now, I'm like, that's the wrong section. I must have mistyped.
Jeff, I do have a question.
Sure.
Could you go back to the slide with the, this one is good. Yeah, this is fine. When, when we have to send an assessment to the county, are there additional charges that get tacked on, a service charge or anything like that, that our residents need to be aware of?
Yes, there's a $50 service fee that we charge every property owner when we go through this process. If we had to like sell, like, do a ban or to borrow money to pay for it and then get reimbursed, we would charge an interest, the interest on that, but that's not the case with this. The city's using general fund money, kind of borrowing from itself, so there's no charge as far as interest goes. As far as the auditor's collection fee, I'm not 100% sure on. I'm told it's 5% auditor's collection fee.
So I think the point is, and if you go back another slide, at 18 bucks a square foot, and you're going to get a pretty good deal if you let the city bid the work, do the work, but then pay your bill, as opposed to having it go to the assessment process. So I mean, I think it's a really good opportunity, because conversely, from Councilman Member Dewar, you know, I think this is a good idea. I don't think the city is responsible for people's sidewalks, I think that's the residents. And when they, when they fall into a state of disrepair, you're actually getting a pretty good deal here if you follow the procedures that the city has laid out. So I thank you, and I guess in the future, I hate assessing, but I, and so I would encourage our citizens to try and pay that bill if they can. Obviously, a lot of people's circumstances are different, but anyway, it's a good job getting that 18-dollar...
Yeah, and thank you for that. I think that was one of the keys to the success of the program, is getting that very, very good bid price, where when we send those bills, it's a much lower amount than people might anticipate.
As a follow-up to that, when we are providing those, do we do like a cost-by-cost comparison? So do the residents understand that if they choose to be assessed, those fees will be?
What we do is we send a general flyer, and you can see an example there on the screen over on the right-hand side, where we spell out the various options. In that flyer, we do say if you choose to go the assessment route, there's a $50 service fee that's charged to you, plus any auditor's collection fees, et cetera. So we try to summarize it in that, in that little flyer there.
And that's the flyer that gets mailed to them as well?
It gets mailed to every property owner, yes.
Small print?
Thank you.
The big print give it, and the small print take it away?
Absolutely.
You were in politics too long. But thank you for the 18 dollars negotiating that, that's a really good deal. I was surprised at that, so that's, makes it a lot easier to swallow that.
Yes, sir.
And it makes the city safer, at least where their sidewalks are. So thank you very much.
Mayor, I'd move to approve ordinance 25-09 to a second reading.
Second?
Have a motion and a second to move ordinance 25-09 to a second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Resolution 25-08, a resolution approving and authorizing a new mutual aid agreement, MOA, between Wright-Patterson Air Force Base, 88th Security Forces Squadron, SFS, and the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
All right, counsel, so this, um, MOA is our mutual aid agreement with Wright-Patt Security Forces, and it was originally signed in 2003, and it gets updated when there's a change in command or either party requests any updates or changes to the MOA. The last one was signed in 2022, and Wright-Patt is requesting some additions to the MOA at this point. Those changes in general relate to small unmanned aircraft systems, i.e. drones, and requesting Beaver Creek's help in situations where there may be drone-type incidents. And then also requesting assistance with background checks if any of their systems go down. So staff did not see any issues with this, and recommending council adopt this resolution.
Any questions from council?
Simply a comment, I've always appreciated the forward thinking on this resolution and its ongoing nature, and I think it's entirely appropriate to update it for... its ongoing nature, and I think it's entirely appropriate to update it for improvements in modern technology. So thank you for bringing it to us.
Yeah, I'm shocked that it has taken this long to have to have any amendments. So I think I'll echo Councilmember Dewar's comments, and I think that these types of collaboration and mutual aid are incredibly important.
I agree, mutual aid is really important, because we've seen too many instances where we needed it and we're glad it was there, because otherwise we couldn't have handled the situation, and vice versa. Someone else, so that's very good. Anyone else have a motion?
Mayor, move to approve Resolution 25-08.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 25-08. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 25-09. Aaron, we finally get to hear from you.
Resolution 25-09, a resolution authorizing submission of an application for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I don't get to visit you a whole lot, it's very exciting.
We're really pleased you're here.
So this resolution, we are looking at applying for a community development block grant on behalf of the senior center. We're working on this with Green County as well as Beaver Creek Township. As you're all aware, we budgeted funds this year in the budget, and Beaver Creek Township also budgeted funds, $25,000 each. So in our budget, that looks like an expense of $50,000 to make ADA improvements at the senior center front entrance. So we still have that money budgeted. This money from the grant would help us to enhance and really elevate our project to do more than just the bare minimum of making that space ADA accessible. As you can imagine, ADA accessibility, while it's important everywhere, at our senior center is especially important with the number of mobility issues and challenges that some of our members have, as well as potential hearing and vision challenges as people age. So we're really looking forward to making the front desk, the front counter accessible, which is not right now. But if we are able to apply for this grant and receive funding, we'll be able to do more than just the bare minimum of making that accessible, as well as replacing some of the caved-in or falling apart cabinets and drawers that are behind that front area, as well as make some improvements to our beverage station that's in the front, if you're looking at the front desk, command station, if you will. To the right of that, there's a beverage area for coffee and tea that could really use some repairs, as well as to the left of the front entrance, along those, the whole wall of windows, there are some really low bench seats that a lot of our transportation riders use as they're waiting for their rides and things like that. We'll be able to replace that furniture and some of the front lobby furniture that's getting quite worn, and replace those with some new items, add some storage, as well as add some better accessible, like the bench seats, have some seats with backs, potentially some arms, things that are easier for people to get in and out of. So that's what we're looking for with this funding. We are, the total that we are requesting for the grant is just shy of $52,000. It's $51,975. I'm happy to entertain any questions that you all have about it.
Aaron, is this CDBG, given what's going on on the federal level, do you anticipate any difficulty here, or is higher-ups told you we're still alive and kicking and we think the money will be available?
The latter, that, yeah, we think the money will still be available.
All right.
This funnels through the county, and they've assured us that this is still a program that's happening.
Well, it's badly needed, that's for sure.
There's no question about that.
It'd be a very nice upgrade.
Are we going to still keep the Plexiglas in front of the...
No, not all of it. It makes it really hard to hear and even pass documents back and forth.
Yeah.
So at COVID time, yeah, we put the glass up in the front. You could still see some glass, but not all glass.
Right.
It gets loud up there if you ever visit the senior center.
Doesn't it?
It gets loud at the front. It's a social place.
Yes, it is.
Mayor, I'd move to approve Resolution 25-09.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 25-09. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And Councilman Curran, I think they're starting to release some of the money, because one of the, another organization I'm involved with just got half of what they were supposed to get, so it's moving.
Very good.
Liquor licenses.
Liquor licenses.
Creekside Dive.
Yes, we have three different requests. First is a liquor permit transfer. Beaver Creek Pizza Dive from 4021 Dayton-Zeonia Road to 2760 Town Drive. Required record checks were completed on the two applicants, no criminal history was found. Staff does not have any objections or concerns, and are recommending this application request move forward.
Motion to accept without comment?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve liquor license for Creekside Dive. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, a new liquor permit for Fairfield, I'm sorry, Town Place Suites/Fairfield Inn at 2677 Fairfield Commons Boulevard, and required record checks were completed on three applicants, one of whom had a conviction in 2019 for a traffic-related offense. No other criminal history was found. Staff does not have any objections or concerns, and staff is recommending this application request move forward.
Motion to accept without comment?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept without comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, last is a stock transfer. The SMP Food Mart, 4362 Indian Ripple Road. Transfer will be from two shareholders to one shareholder. There was no personal history questionnaire provided with this request, and staff has no concerns or objections. Staff is recommending this application request move forward without comment.
Motion to accept without comment?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept without comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Decision items, board appointment to the BZA.
This, excuse me, this appointment is due... This appointment is due to resignation of a current board member, and that term will end February 28, 2026.
I'll move to appoint Heather Vest to the BZA to fill an unexpired term to February 28, 2026.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Heather Vest to the BZA to fill an unexpired term. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Council time. Let's go with Councilman Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor, much appreciated. As I noted in the beginning, I was away in New York City for five days, so I've been out of town a bit, but I did have the opportunity to speak at two different locations, St. Leonard Community in Centerville, I had a presentation on U.S.-Russia relations, and as always, a fair number of Beaver Creek residents attended, came to say hello, and I believe it'll be rebroadcast on the Miami Valley Communications Channel. So if you're interested in U.S.-Russia relations, I'm chatting for about an hour and a half on it. Conversely, if you need, if you're an insomniac and need help getting to sleep, I am speaking for 90 minutes on the Miami Valley Communications Channel, so. Also had the opportunity to lead two sessions at University Baptist Church's Men's Conference called Sharpen. Very well attended, very thankful, over 150 men in our community with that, and had the opportunity to talk about marriage, and so very thankful to be involved and have that opportunity as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to echo my thanks to you for the proclamation today about the dispatchers and Arbor Day, but particularly the dispatchers, as I state every year, my sister is a dispatcher for the Highway Patrol, and she's worked at the city level, the county level, and the state level, and so she's got a little bit of experience with it all, and you just, that person on the other end of the line is hearing someone at probably one of their worst moments, and so we're just very, very thankful, not only for their dedication, but also for their compassion and understanding and ability to maintain their cool when someone is calling them in one of their most dire needs and dire circumstances. So just a special thanks to that. I was lucky enough to attend the Plan Beaver Creek Steering Committee with Councilman Littoral. Goodness, I almost lost my train of thought. And I just, I have to say, it was so interesting. It was a two-hour meeting. I thought, oh my goodness, this two hours is going to drag on. We probably could have sat there for another five hours discussing all of the different issues and all of the different perspectives. I think the composition of the steering committee is excellent. There's realtors, there's developers, there's representatives from all different aspects, and presented points of view that I hadn't previously considered when thinking about the planning and the development of the city. And so I'm really looking forward to the future meetings. I think we have another meeting next month and the presentations. And additionally, I'm super excited to hear the public's input, and so, you know, we're looking at different ways in which we can garner the public's opinion. I know when they did the presentation here, there were talks about the popcorn festival. But if you're interested and you kind of want to see the information that was distributed to us during that meeting, you can go to Plan Beaver Creek. I believe there's a link on the city's website as well that will direct you there, and it provides you with the informational packet that we were provided, as well as the different considerations and things, just information on the city that really I hadn't thought about before. So it was really great. I was, I'm very much enjoying it.
Do they take minutes?
I don't know if those are public. That's a good question, Pete, I don't know the answer. I don't, I don't believe they did, but I'll...
Got it, okay.
And last, I am looking forward to, we have decided, and I don't know if I mentioned this after our last meeting, but the Region 14 meeting that I have for the opioid funds, we had decided to move those meetings to every other month, and so we didn't have a meeting last month. We will have a meeting next week, so I should have more information at the next council meeting on that. That's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Littoral.
Thank you, Mayor. I, actually, the last time I was in this room, it was the day before I left for vacation. It was for the steering committee meeting, which I'll echo everything that Councilwoman Schwartz said. It was a, it was a very, very productive meeting in the sense of just meeting the people that were involved, and I think that the, the team that had been brought together was, it's inspiring is the word for it, because they did bring so much, and I almost felt like I need to come up with more, you know? I mean, there was a lot of, a lot of good, good subject matter that was brought up at this, at the meeting. I want to also say I appreciate the proclamation for the communications room. You know, they, in Dispatch, they aren't like a link in the chain, they're probably about two feet of the chain or more, in the sense that you're relying on everything that they're saying the whole time, that they're headed, and they definitely deserve all the, all the praise that we can possibly give them, so. But I'm back in work mode now, I guess, so I need, I'll pass it on. I'm tired.
You tired?
I got home last night, so.
Anything else? Councilman Curran.
Thank you, Your Honor. I had the honor to attend the Mayor's monthly event, Midwest Shooting, nice crowd, and of course, they're just really great hosts, providing space, and it was a nice event. Also had the opportunity to attend the scholarship luncheon sponsored by the Beaver Creek Women's League, which recognizes three ladies that want to pursue academic careers, and just gives them a little boost, as all of you are familiar with them. They do a tremendous job, and they had a huge crowd on Saturday at the Holiday Inn. Also want to remind our citizens who are listening that tomorrow night, 5 to 7, comments considered by citizens on the Kemp Road widening, whenever that takes place, but it's 5 to 7 here at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I didn't forget tonight, Vice Mayor Bales.
I thought I'd start with Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission update. We met just a couple of weeks ago. MBRPC has moved into their new offices, they are fully moved in now, so if you need to get ahold of them, their new address is 6 North Main Street, pretty much right across the street from where they were before. As a part of the meeting, they did a community spotlight, and this month they focused on Sydney. And the city manager, Andrew Boscher, came down and gave a really dynamic presentation on all of the economic development things that he and his team have been doing in Sydney, along with pictures and graphs and charts, it was almost like a state of the city. But they've been really able to make quite a bit of great headway in Sydney in the last couple of years, and I think I'm going to take a special trip up there someday and just check it out. Finally, with regards to MBRPC, ODOT did a presentation about their Access Ohio 2050 Plan. This is basically like their big comprehensive plan for state highways and state roadways. They will be holding a stakeholder meeting in the Dayton area, MBRPC, on May 8. This is our chance to advocate for roadway improvements that aren't already on kind of their radar or in their plan, so like unfunded projects. So I'm thinking this is where we can really make a push for like the I-675 Grange Hall Road interchange, the I-35 Factory Road issue, and so forth. So I plan to attend that stakeholder meeting and at least express my concern, and hopefully on our behalf, you know? You know, I will get it to you. I didn't write it down on my notes today, so I'd rather not misspeak, but I'll get it to you for sure. So that's, that's all I have with regard to MBRPC, but it was a good, good meeting. I want to thank everyone who came out to the Spring House Park Public Meeting and Forum. I thought it was really nice to, a huge crowd.
Very big.
And a lot of interesting input with regards to the type of playground, the colors that were interesting to all, so I thought that was cool. I also wanted to thank anyone who supported the Violence Free Future Spring Fling Event last Friday night. I know several of us were there. It was a huge success, and the organization was able to raise thousands of dollars, which is their main primary fundraiser for the organization. So thank you all for attending that and supporting that organization, who really helps not only Beaver Creek, but, but all of the communities in Green County. I mentioned earlier, I took a call earlier today from a citizen who was concerned about the zoning ordinance. I just want to thank him for calling me. My phone is always on, it's generally available to take your calls. He was also concerned because he wanted to be at two places at the same time.
Same guy.
Did you guys get this call?
I did.
Yeah, okay, so...
I had a chance to talk with him and tried to explain to him that the separateness nature of the school board and the city and...
School board apparently had scheduled an open house kind of forum on the new school tax levy for tonight as well, and he was upset that we were having our meeting at the same time that they were having theirs. Anyway, I want to thank him for calling me. I'm sorry we couldn't really do anything about it, but anyway, I'm sure there'll be an opportunity to watch the school presentation at some other point in time. And finally, I get to, I get the honor of announcing the anniversaries for those employees who have been working with us. We've got a great list here in, in April, so I'll start with the Police Department. Kaitlin Baker, four years. John Bondi, three years. In public service, we have Jesse Arnett, three years. Mark Schulker, six years. Tom Beck, 16 years. And Christopher Gerhart, 21 years. In parks, Shawna Tibbs-Sargent, six years. Human Resources, Christina Skiba, two years. In golf, we have Spiro Stellanos, three years. In Golf, we have Spiro Stellanos, three years. Charles LaMaster, eight years. And Steve Click, 21 years. And in Communications, Steve Hamilton, three years. So thank you all for your service. We really appreciate it.
Chief, I think John's been here longer than three years. I would say I, I think that's been, I've known him for a long time, so. Very good. I guess it's my turn. I just want to reiterate what was said earlier about the dispatchers. You know, I've been out there, as you have and the chief has, and I don't think that you could have a police department, sheriff's department, or anything like that without dispatchers. There's just no way that you could do the things that need to be done and keep track of everything. And they do it with incredible accuracy and, and keep their cool. It's, it's just amazing to... I sat up there in that dispatch office a few times and listened to them and I don't care how difficult it is, they just get through it. And I don't know that I could do that. I was able to attend the Vietnam Veterans Day Recognition along with Councilman Kern at VFW Post 8312. It's, it was enjoyable to be there. They asked me to speak and I was honored to speak and it was, I met a former captain of Special Forces in the Army that was there. Some of the stories he had were, were pretty interesting. I was able to attend a change of command for the 655th ISR Intelligence Surveillance and Reconnaissance Wing at Wright-Patt. They seem to have those change of commands every other week anymore. We also hosted the Miami Valley Military Affairs Association Board Meeting at the Senior Center and I was able to speak and welcome them to Beaver Creek. City Manager and I attended the monthly managers, Mayor's and Managers Meeting. And there was a speaker there that was, was really good. He was from Solvita, which is the tissue donation company. And I was so impressed, I had him come to Rotary and speak on Friday. They give out, I think they're averaging 1.2 million graphs a year now. It started out with like a thousand. You know, they do those all through the, all, all around the world. I was invited to attend an open house at Hope Spot in Xenia. That was an interesting location. It's a, it's a resource center. I mean, they do some counseling and things like that, but they put people that are recovering from different addictions or jail or, or whatever and connect them with resources. And it was, they were celebrating 10 years. They're actually going to be building a place here in Beaver Creek sometime this summer. So I don't know exactly where it's going to be yet, but I think it's over in, on Kemp Road. I too attended the Violence Free Futures Spring Fling. That was a, that was a fun time. I don't think they raised quite as much as they did last year, but they came close. So it was, it was a good event. Beaver Creek Women's League on Saturday was, was fun. It was a Mad Hatter theme and there were some people dressed up as a Mad Hatter. But they've given away, the Beaver Creek Women's League has given away over $250,000 in scholarships to high school seniors from Beaver Creek and women in transition, who are women that are in the workforce, have children, maybe not a husband. They're trying to get back in and go back to school. So it really helps out a lot with that. And then yesterday, I was honored to go to Hawker Church to help a young lady celebrate her 100th birthday. It was, that was a fun event. I know the, I know the people back there at the back table know her pretty well because she works at the Senior Center. And she spent over 70 years volunteering at the church.
Wow.
And she, I don't know how many years she's been at the Senior Center, but all the things that she does and all the volunteering she's done with Girl Scouts and whatever. She's never had a driver's license and never had public transportation. So she's found a way to get around to do all this stuff. A lot of perseverance there, so. And with that, I will turn it over to the City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to, everybody was asking like, who's that? You know, we always get one, we get somebody new in the crowd, especially an employee. Carrie, if you could come forward, please. Carrie Truax is our Senior Center Supervisor. So she doesn't make it out much sometimes. Carrie had a busy day today, didn't she, at Senior Center?
Yeah, big Easter brunch.
With a big Easter brunch, yes. So just, you want to greet City Council? You've been here since, what was it, late last year, wasn't it?
January 6th or 7th, depending, since we had a snow day on my first day of work.
I couldn't remember if it was in December or January, but okay.
Yes, well, it's, it's wonderful to meet all of you. So I've been with the Senior Center for about three months now. It's been a wonderful experience so far, getting to know all the members and seeing, seeing how special of a place it is. So my previous Parks and Rec experiences with the city of Centerville, so I'm excited to bring that here. Then I most recently was with Bee Hope Church. So I've gotten to know quite a bit about Beaver Creek being there with them. So I'm excited to see all the great things we'll continue to do at the Senior Center and then where I can help continue to develop and meet the needs of our seniors. Thank you.
As I recall, you have a history in South Dakota too, don't you?
I do not.
I thought, I thought you did. I'm sorry. Somebody else.
Wrong.
Not me. Unfortunately, that would be...
Because that's where I'm from and I never talked, I thought it was you. I apologize.
I'm from the Indianapolis area, so not as exciting.
Welcome, Carrie. And so if you stop in the Senior Center, be sure to say hi to Carrie.
Carrie does a great job. I can attest to it, just seeing how she interacts with numerous senior members. And just, she just got the right, the right mood to do it. Does a good job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. All right, just a few announcements here quickly. We mentioned this earlier, Spring House Park Phase 1 Feedback Survey. City is asking residents to help shape the future of Spring House Park Phase 1 Development through a survey. The survey consists of six questions, so it's not long, but it's about the playground, features, colors, options, future additions, and site details. The deadline to complete the survey is Friday, April 18th. And you can visit beavercreekohio.gov backslash, slash Spring House Park to take the survey. This was mentioned also, Arbor Day. First of its kind, we'll give it a shot here, Thursday, April 24th, 4:00 to 9:00, at Southern Ohio Brewing. Southern Ohio Brewing is a good partner. They've always are having welcome to ideas and events. So I do appreciate them attempting to see if the two, two different entities or two different thoughts can come together. And I think it will. Hey, the tagline did it, or the name of it proved it could be meshed together. So toast to the trees for Arbor Day with the Tree Advisory Board and Southern Ohio Brewing. Chat with experts and ask an arborist table, take home a free tree sampling while supplies last and enjoy forest-inspired beer that captures the spirit of the woods. So there you go, Mayor. This is coming up at the end of the month, so we're into spring. Saturday, April 26th, from 11:00 to 1:00, and it's at Dominic Lofino Park. Celebrate the spring and return of warmer weather with games, inflatables, and food. The Green Optimists Club will help celebrate the National Kite Month with free kites to fly. And this event is free for all ages. So there's a lot of fun. That's a, one of our larger events, of course, not 4th of July, but this is one of our larger events and is very well-attended. So come out April 26th. This was mentioned as well, Tuesday, April 15th, so this is tomorrow night, 5:00 to 7:00, right here in Council Chambers. We do have this on the website that has more information as far as the grants and the amounts and more details and can be provided here. So you may want to look at that before you, you come, but still come on out. This is in partnership with the Ohio Department of Transportation proposing improvements, the Kemp Road between Meadow Court Drive and Bluing Drive. An open house will be held to provide the information. And of course, you can discuss and answer questions with staff and gather feedback. Same thing with Indian Ripple Road Project. Again, this is available on our website, has a lot more details and funding and a whole bunch of more information. But this is later in the month, Thursday, April 24th, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. The city of Beaver Creek in partnership with Ohio Department of Transportation, also improvements along Indian Ripple from Barron Wood Boulevard to the eastern city limits. Open House will be held to provide the information and of course, discuss and answer questions with feedback. Both of these projects are not construction this year, okay? So this is the early phases and engineering and, and things like that where we have the open houses to get the feedback. And lastly, I will just, on a personal note, wish my wife a happy 35th anniversary today.
Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. And we wish you a happy anniversary as well, so. Citizen comments? Anyone like to address Council on any topic? Please come forward, state your name and address. You will have three minutes or you can have up to six minutes donated by others in the audience.
I understand. I didn't have anybody else coming. Bob Trout, 2187 Bassett Court. And my comment is related with the Ordinance 2508, which is transferring 54.5 acres to the Beaver Creek Development Corporation. My recommendation is you use that for a grocery store, restaurants, or something like that because Beaver Creek south of I-35 is disenfranchised. It has no, no supermarket or anything else like that. So you need to do that because you don't want to create a food desert for the people, for the residents that do live here. So please consider that because it would take care of County Lion Road all the way to Alpha down at that end. So there's nothing there, zero. So you got it. The other comment I have is regarding Parcel 63, that is part of where Spring Hill Park is at. The 2020 Land Use Map indicated that Parcel 63 was to be used for research and development, office light industrial, and high-tech manufacturing. And I can't find anything changing the zoning to allow a park to be created. So I'm going to be there tomorrow to try and find that document to see where it did change the zoning requirements. The other thing that I have is the Beaver Creek Development Corporation had an annual meeting, 7 March, 2025. No minutes are posted on the website, nothing on it. I can't find anything, whatever. And also on the website, there is no Board of Directors listed or anything else. So who the heck is up, work on that development corporation? So I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Clayton Neif, 2379 Grange Hall Road. I'd like to start off by thanking the Council for hearing the rezoning. And you guys had a tough decision to make and I understand the city does have to keep interest legally sound. With that said, I know this isn't a Q and A, it's a public comment, but we do have a few questions as a community. Number one, when will site plan meetings for Ordinance 25-02 be? Does it provide time for public comment? Can the community advocate for what we want at the site plan phase? And then what can we, if we're allowed to, as a community, ask for at the site-specific plans? That's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will answer one of those. There will be some interaction with the citizens during that time. Basically the same process that we went through for zoning. So we'll have to go through the whole thing again. So you'll have the two readings and you'll have ample time to speak.
Especially at the first reading.
Sorry. Perhaps get with Randy because I think he could share with you a lot of the information, the process before it even gets to that point so that you have time to review it and get, you know, your neighbors involved and anything else.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion of the citizen comments.
Mayor, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for purposes of consideration of the sale of property at competitive bidding or the sale or other disposition of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit-for-use property and a conference with the city attorney concerning disputes involving the city that are subject to pending or imminent court action.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Federal roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, and there will be no decisions coming out of this, so effectively the meeting is over. We'll come back and adjourn, but that's basically all we're going to do, so. Thank you for being here. We are in executive session.